...the May twenty-six, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We are saddened tonight to hear of the death of a former city councilman, Ambrose Bailey, and we send our condolences to the Bailey family this evening. We will be led in invocation by Councilor Matthew Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you wish.
To echo the mayor, I would like to have us all keep in their prayers and their thoughts the Bailey family. Ambrose Bailey was not only a member of the council, he was also a community leader and was, is a great loss to the city. Most merciful Father, be with those in distress and pain, comfort them. Be with our men and women in uniform, both home and abroad, and keep them safe and their family safe. Help us this evening to make the decisions that benefit all the residents of the city of Fredericksburg, and always remind us that we are here to serve and not be served. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight. We do have a public hearing, a first read item amending the fares charge for the Fredericksburg Regional Transit System. I will call upon Craig Reed.
I need to read it.
I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, will you please read the item?
The City of Fredericksburg will hold a public hearing on proposed fare changes for Fredericksburg Regional Transit. The proposed fare fees include, for Fred, bus service would apply to all jurisdictions served by Fred, the City of Fredericksburg, and the counties of Spottavania, Stafford, and Caroline.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Craig Reed. I'm manager of policy planning and programming with Fred Transit, and I'd like to make just a few remarks about our fare review process that we conduct, and then specifically this review for the most recent year, and then open up to any questions that you may have. Fred conducts fare reviews prior to the start of each fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July to June, with this July first being the start of our fiscal year 2016. Our fare pricing decisions are driven by our desire to provide low-cost, safe, reliable, quality service to our customers, and at the same time, to be a good value to our funding partners. As a result of these annual reviews, fares were increased in fiscal years 2010, 2012, and 2013, or 2014, which would have been July of 2013. Although our reviews are quite comprehensive, looking at fare structures, ridership, cost trends, and so on, this year's analysis tend to lead us towards taking a close look at our passes. This year's analysis showed that our passes accounted for twenty-five percent of our trips and only fifteen percent of our revenue, and that these passes at their current pricing represented a forty-nine percent discount over regular fares. We also noted as part of this review that the last time we increased monthly passes was in 2014 for the monthly pass for regular service. The VRE, the rail pass service, hadn't been increased since 2012, and our annual passes had remained at the same price of $200 since 2010. Given the significant discount, the proportion of trips versus the revenue, and the time elapsed since the last increases, we believe that a price adjustment to our passes was needed. By increasing these passes, we believe we'll still be providing a meaningful discount to the frequent riders, and using just some estimating that we have based on history, we figured it would be at least, on the average, a twenty-two percent discount over a regular fare. And at the same time, it would increase our fare box revenue, and again, keeping in mind in fairness to our funding agencies, by approximately $9,000. On the average, we sell about one hundred and twenty-five monthly passes, two annual passes, and seven VRE passes per month, and that's based on 2014, the last full fiscal year's worth of data. So with that, I'll open up to any questions that you might have about our review and our request to increase the fares.
Are there any questions for Mr. Reed? Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What proportion of your budget comes from fares?
Around twelve percent. We cover about twelve percent of our expenses through fares.
Okay, can you give me a heads-up with regards to looking down the road at current funding sources, state and federal, for the program, what you're saying?
As far, if you're talking about, do we see any increases or decreases or large changes in state or federal? No. We received a fare increase two years ago, and we really don't see in the near future any significant changes one way or the other in that. Now, of course, you know, things can always change based on budget decisions, but right now, we're looking at fairly stable and constant funding stream.
Okay, so you're not looking at anything new. I know you guys got a big bump because of a mistake, mistake in their, their math a few years ago, but you haven't seen any, you're not getting any feedback yet with regards to future fundings, any increases? Only looking at it from the standpoint, I know what PRTC is going through right now, which is going to be a significant downsizing the next few years, and I didn't know if we were suffering from the same issues that they are. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Reed? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this matter of amending the fares to the Fred's bus system? Please state your name and address.
Ragama Mohammed, eleven twelve Caroline Street, man co-see of the Independent Green Party of Fredericksburg, and just about lowering this fare for the transit. We do independent green party deals in more trains, less traffic, so I do know a bit about it. A project that I think would help significantly is the mono rail. The mono rail is a rail that goes around town, it's on one track, and it hits all the key spots within town, almost completely eliminates the need for a car, or bus can run twenty-four hour, or can run a lot, however much you need. If you need a blueprint or example of this mono rail, the place that implemented, implemented it well ironically, is Disneyland. Disneyland has a mono rail, and it travels around, it carries people all the rides, they don't have to worry about their cars, or bikes, or anything, and it's pretty inexpensive. Just tying it to employment within the town, having a mono rail, a project like this, when you all have the Rappahannock Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission, President Obama has, in this town, liaisons to his My Brothers Keepers Program, and these, these group homes, they oftentimes don't have a place for these kids to transition into. And with the work that you all are doing with them, and with the My Brothers Keepers Program within town, and the liaisons there, it sets up a jobs for them to transition easily into this mono rail, conducting, I don't know, building, you know, all the things that take, that it needs have happened. So anyway, hope you all look into that, appreciate your time, and it's, and it is a continuing part of what I call Jesus Sharia Law, just making everybody's lives better, even if it takes a little bit of force. All right. Shant.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the matter of amending the fares for the Fred bus system? Then we declare this public hearing closed. This is an item to be voted on tonight. Only first read needs to be brought back at our next meeting for a second read.
Madam Mayor, moved ordinance on first read amending the fares charge for the Fredericksburg Regional Transit System.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero, yeah, six zero.
Officer Morris, thank you for being with us this evening. Now, we have time for comments from the public. The City Council provides this opportunity each regular meeting for comments from citizens who have signed up to speak before the start of the meeting. To be fair to everyone, please observe the five-minute time limit and yield the floor when the clerk of council indicates that your time has expired. Decorum will be maintained. Comments not relevant to city business, behavior that's disruptive such as applause, or inappropriate and out of order. We have five speakers signed up tonight. The first is Marilyn Brown.
My name is Ms. Marilyn Brown. I'm here to testify tonight on the commuter bus for the Fred going down to the train in the morning. I would like to keep that bus because they do good job. The local bus right around town, they no good. They, they don't even, best one is a commuter bus run downtown, but meantime, I can't catch it because I go to work at five o'clock in the morning, and also, I need, I had to be on my job at five. I want y'all to consider Stafford County care to come into the City of Fredericksburg at four o'clock to pick me up, take me to the base, because I can't, VRE don't go early enough for me, and that's what I want y'all do, and also, need more program for Mike or Minnesota to help people in the city, homeless people and all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Do I need to state my name again and my address?
Yes, please, for the record, because the meeting is taped.
Okay. My name is Amy Taj. I live at thirteen oh nine Princess Anne Street. Can I ask a question before my time is started as well?
Yes.
The video I passed out at last council meeting, was everybody able to listen to that? The video that I passed out at last council, was every council member listened to that video?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Fabulous. Basically, what was stated at the last council meeting was you all were going to do investigation on the findings of Happy Endings. However, per that investigation, a lot was left out. Why the petition was not mentioned, was not in there. There was a complaint from at least fifteen different neighbors that were on that petition, that had signed the petition, and listed a plethora of things that had gone on with their yard in general in terms of Happy Endings. Why was a grand jury hearing left out, with all fifteen of us testifying, which the Bravia Jenkins set up? Why was the conviction of three separate noise ordinances or violations by Happy Endings in which the manager, Rick, was found guilty in 2013? Why was a lot of the police findings that you had on that police report left out? Also, the video that I provided was solid evidence of the noise. I just asked a second ago, did anyone listen to that? How can that possibly be ignored? That noise was outrageous. It's a violation of my rights. I cannot sleep at night. My neighbors cannot sleep at night. The noise is obviously a major problem at Happy Endings, which we all know this. What's being done about it, I'm not really sure. Also, I was stated that the patio closing at ten o'clock, what is the definition of the word "close"? If you, someone this evening could please define that word "close" for me, I would greatly appreciate it, since I'm only aware of "close" means actually "closed". The patio at Happy Endings is not closed at ten PM. Also, it was stated to me that also, or that you noted, that there were over three hundred calls for service from Happy Endings. How can council simply ignore three hundred and some calls and then state that there's not a problem? That's a pretty big problem to me. Also, the, the big thing I have is, you also left out, there were over five plus some meetings with Happy Endings, with Ms. Raymer, with Mr. Sojak, with Rick himself, the bartender or manager of the facility. In terms of what the, what was going on with the business, their noise, trash in the yards, us not being able to sleep, property being vandalized, all that was left out too in your so-called findings that you did of Happy Endings. So basically, my question is, why is this being left out? If it was supposed to be thoroughly investigated, why was all of that left off of that report? Those are very legit things that should have been on there. Also, you left out a very big thing that still bothers me to this date. On that report, a girl was being carried from the bar to a cab, because she was that intoxicated, where the police were sitting across the street, and they just observed this whole incident. That's a major problem. That's police, and I think city at the same time. People puking on the side of the building, police just observed. That has an issue with over-serving. You know, nothing is being done to protect the rights of the individuals that live on that block. I don't think that it's fair that we're woken up all the time to make calls about noise violations and the following of the noise ordinance, which clearly, clearly states that within the time where Happy Endings is located and sleeping facilities, I mean, that's clearly written in there. So if we're being woken up, and there's over, what you guys investigated, three hundred and some calls, and state that there is not a problem, and that they are following all regulations and rules-
Thirty seconds.
-is not the truth. Basically, it's a major problem. Mediation is not going to solve this. I've tried mediation with Happy Endings on numerous occasions, and I would like council to please step up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taj. The next speaker is Tom Burns.
My name is Tom Burns, and I live in the two hundred block of Falkir Street. I'm speaking here tonight because my neighbors asked me, and quite frankly, like them, I am pretty disgusted by your failure to address Happy Endings, a serious public menace that remains a persistent threat to public safety, with but two exceptions, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Fry, thank you. Your collective inability and outright refusal to accept considerable evidence of illegal activity, and to more than acknowledge over three hundred phone and over two hundred email complaints, is indicative of a jurisdictional incompetence that is beneath you, beneath your true talents as individuals, and beneath who we are as a city. The May twelve memorandum concerning the real and documented threat was incomplete, misleading, and predicated on your easily disproven insistence that criminal activity associated with this business is on par with other restaurants in Fredericksburg, which defames all other law-abiding restaurant owners, because it is not true. During the exact same timeframe, Happy Endings had three hundred and one police calls for service, Quebeca had two, Bistro Betham had seven, and La Petite had six, all larger restaurants serving more customers. Your absurd claim that most of the incidents cited by neighbors do not constitute violations of law is also not true, and your acceptance "as if" is offensive. Do you really believe driving while intoxicated, public drunkenness, littering, public urination, defecation, vandalism, and assault do not constitute violations of law? An entire neighborhood of citizens have been complaining and sharing evidence of this exact kind of illegal activity for years. It's time you acknowledge, acknowledge this, accept it, and do something besides meet behind closed doors to, to resolve that nothing can be done. Quote, "The restaurant is currently operated in substantial compliance with state and local regulations." No, it is not. The same exact memo actually includes a partial but still substantial list of specific criminal offenses related to this restaurant. Citizens and police actually have even more, real evidence that won't go away just because you ignore it. Recorded non-compliance, recorded lawbreaking in arrest records, on video, in photographs, audio recordings, and police reports you can't continue to dismiss. The memo's attachment of incidents was woefully incomplete. Why was the disturbing November twenty-third incident not included, where a city police officer observed a wasted, over-served female being carried out of Happy Endings to a waiting car? Is it because she was carried in drunk illegally? Or because, or because the police did not storm the place and arrest the bartender for once again over-serving? What if that was your daughter? Your claim, quote, "The business is in compliance with tax laws" is also misleading. You've all seen this receipt, and many others like it. We have a collection of littered receipts that prove Happy Endings has been overcharging, too drunk to notice patrons' state sales tax. How is this not stealing? Shouldn't the public know this? How long did this go on? Does it not bother you this was happening at a city business under your noses? Here's a memo, quote, "The police department reports that Happy Endings does not permit patrons to bring beer or wine outside after ten PM." Again, video evidence. It proves this is not true. It is not debatable. Why, why are citizens more informed about illegal activity at Happy Endings than you? Your inappropriate suggestion of mediation is extraordinarily offensive. It also demonstrates how far out in left field you all remain. This was already tried, yes, and, and the vitriolic response from Happy Endings to the single mom city school teacher who made the mediation effort is not one that can be repeated in public. You kicked out the Celebrate Virginia Live concert series for imagined public safety concerns. Why then ignore real, quantified, and recorded Happy Endings threats to public safety? Virginia Code clearly allows for any real or bogus grandfather clause to be null and voided if a change in circumstance has a negative impact on public safety. What more evidence do you think you need? What's next? A car thief in Fredericksburg must steal a half dozen cars before they're really stealing, or before they are no longer in substantial compliance with the law? What happened to compliance, period? Remind yourselves, the city lowered neighboring property values around Happy Endings for a reason. Yes. Go back and read the memo attachment. Pretend the DUIs, assaults, vandalism, and other documented criminal activity associated with this public menace, all right there in black and white. Pretend or accept that is a threat to public safety and take responsible action. Change the zoning. Establish a permanent police presence.
Thirty seconds.
Void the so-called grandfather clause, limit their hours, or shut them down. Do something actionable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Bill West.
Good evening. I'm Bill West at thirteen eleven Princess Anne Street, and I will be brief. First of all, I think that this whole thing with Happy Endings is really funny, because it got forwarded to this point because we're complaining of non-enforcement of the law, and then you're trying to use lack of convictions for the same things we've demonstrated that haven't been enforced to not do anything. Secondly, you're also ignoring the fact that a city judge ruled the place, excuse me, a public nuisance. You're ignoring, you're ignoring the fact that they also did not pay city taxes there for a while, and were convicted of that, also with help of the Fredericksburg Sheriff's Department. And I'll leave you with that. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. West. Nathan Tickle.
Nathan Tickle, seven oh five Lee Avenue. Thank you. Here today concerning a bike parking regulation that came to light to me earlier in the day. I received a very nice laminated paper telling me that the use of city signposts, street light poles, trees, fences, or other city-owned property to secure bicycles is not permitted. Told me to remove the bicycle immediately, and then on the other side, it gave me a list of the places that the bicycle racks are located, which I very much appreciate. I'm very glad that I got this notice, and my bike wasn't towed away immediately, and I had a, a chance to, to move it away, so I'm thankful for that. So I just wanted to go over how that was affecting me and what, what I'm used to in, in city bike laws. I'm, I'm, I've moved back to the city a year ago, after living in various cities across the country, and, for example, how, how this is affecting me at the moment, the, the list gives seven available locations where the bike racks are located, but they're all in a six-block region. It's, none of you can see this from here, but they're kind of all clustered in one little six-block radius, and our town is significantly larger than that, so effectively, this is telling me that I can't park my bike anywhere but where these bike racks are located. So for example, if I were to be parking, if I wanted to go to the train station, I would have to walk four blocks in order to, in order to park, which, for me, it seems a little prohibitive on the convenience of bicycles, and I'm really appreciative and thankful that the, the city has been doing so much to promote bicycling through the Canal Path, the River Heritage Trail, the, the bike paths, the repaving of the streets. So in that respect, I'm thankful, and I'd like to continue to see progress, and that's why I'm just giving you my perspective here. What I'd like to do is I could quote a few other, other cities and their ordinances, and ordinances in reference to the, in similarity, and see, we can see how they're similar and different from ours. The first one is from the Pocket Guide to D.C. Bike Law from DDOT, the Metropolitan Police and District Department of Transit. In the introduction to this guidebook, it states that the Washington Area Bicycle List Association, the District Columbia Department of Transportation, and Metropolitan Police Department, is, is designed to help inform both cyclists and law enforcement officers of their rights and responsibilities as cyclists in D.C. streets. So it says under the section, "Where can bikes be locked?", and section twelve oh nine point two states, "A person may secure a bicycle to a stanchion, parking meter, or other pole by means of a lock or similar device, as long as securing the bicycle does not obstruct or unduly impede traffic or pedestrian movement, as long as securing the bicycle has not been permitted by any notice by the director." And then it goes, "You may not block your bike to fire hydrants, police and fire call boxes, trees, and things within the stanchions or poles located within bus zones or stands." And a lot of these things are very reasonable, and I understand, and I, in fact, received my notice when my bike was parked with a tree, and the City of Philadelphia has similar rules where they allow you to, I could quote their, paraphrase of their regulations from their bicycle coalition, where public street, it says, "You may lock your bike to public street poles or parking meters, so long as you not-
Thirty seconds.
-block the pedestrian pass, passageway or right-of-way." So what I'm looking for is maybe there's a little bit more leniency, or some more room for which public things we can block our bikes to? For example, I understand that trees, you, you might damage them through locking your bike to that, through some of my reading and research before I came today, and that I find very reasonable. Lamp posts and other things.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Tickle, I appreciate your bringing this to us, and our, our emails are available on the website if you want to relate to us, other, other ordinances, and, and communicate them to us, that, that would be helpful. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, you, did you say you lived on Virginia Avenue?
Lee Avenue.
Lee Avenue.
Well, I'd steal my word. I'd like to give you, may I give him my card and let him contact me to, to do that?
Yes, sir. I'd very much appreciate that.
Contact you and I can meet, and we can go over that, see whether we can help you with your concerns.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All righty.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, if I-
Yes.
-before we move on, if I could just also, Mr. Tickle, I recently joined the Clean and Green Commission that we have in the city this past year. I, I took a spot of somebody who had been on that, and I think that might be a, a good avenue as well. So I, I guess I'll get your contact information from Mr. Withers and maybe contact you about that, and, and looking, I'd certainly appreciate that. I tried to ride my bike all weekend and not really drive. I know it was recently Bike to Work Day, and, you know, my, my kids are the reason there are bike racks at the high school, because there weren't, and my kids are riding bikes there. So I certainly appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and maybe looking at expanding either bike racks or the ability to, you know, lock up somewhere. So I'll be in touch with you through Mr. Withers. Okay? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. That concludes the number, the speakers who have signed up to speak. Um, council agenda, we have one item, uh, on the council agenda. Are there any additions to the council agenda? Council Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy Endings on, please.
All right. Um, Council Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Um, I have two items I'd like to add. One I'll call tanker car.
Okay.
And the other item I will call missing persons.
All right. So that gives us, um, that gives us council, councils, four items for the council agenda. Um, so I will call on Council Frye first for Item seven A, Midnight Madness.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw, once again. Um, I would like to take this opportunity, um, some folks have heard about it, we've been discussing Midnight Madness within the budget through that process, which, uh, I'm, I'm very grateful of, because I got to take something positive and also learn the, the budget during my first budget season of how to add items and how to approach the budget. So, um, all in all, uh, Midnight Madness is, is something I'm, I'm very, very happy about. Um, it, Midnight Madness, what I want to do right now is explain it to the public, um, of what it is. But, uh, it's a formula that was created, um, in Fredericksburg some years ago, uh, in the early nineties by, uh, Mr. James E. Bailey, who was then the Assistant Principal at James Monroe High School, which, in, in the early nineties, I was also a student, and, uh, we didn't know where the program came from. Um, a lot of folks in the city knew about the program, but doing a little research, found out that Mr. Bailey is the one who utilized the, uh, back then it was James Monroe High School. Um, he had some help. Um, he had, he also had the police department join in, and the Parks and Rec Department also joined in, and a host of volunteers around the city. So what we're doing now today is, uh, is reintroducing Midnight Madness to Fredericksburg. Like I say, I, I can't say it enough, but I'm, I'm very happy about it. Um, the program will run every Friday night from eight P.M., excuse me, eight P.M. to midnight. Uh, we will run city school buses, as of now, we have three school buses, um, that will pick, uh, Fredericksburg residents up, um, kids ages eleven to seventeen, and what it provides is a safe haven, uh, for the kids. It also provides an opportunity for youth who, who may not have funds, um, a lot of kids go to the movies, um, a lot of kids have in-house entertainment, so on and so forth. But what it does is, it, it provides an outlet for kids where they can burn off some positive energy. Um, same, the same formula is, is, is in effect. Um, we have, I, I would say the city, because it, I'm trying to make this a city project, not one department, but, um, it, it's incorporating the entire city of Fredericksburg, and, and I'm big on that, because I'm, I'm, I'm proud to be from Fredericksburg, and I want to do my part to, to make things better. But, um, the, the key source is here is us, um, and we also have, uh, the police department, which would be involved. Uh, the officers will ride the bus as well as provide security, um, at the school, which would be, uh, Walker Grant, the new Walker Grant, um, on Learning Lane. And we also have incorporated the Parks and Rec Department, which will more or less, uh, head and, and, and do gym management and help out with activities and everything else that, that goes along with it. Um, that's pretty much what I have on the program. The kids can get registered at the Fredericksburg, at the Dorothy Hart Community Center. Um, I, I would suggest that they register fast. Um, we want as many kids as possible to, to get involved in this program, which is funded, I want to note that, which is funded by the city. That's why I mentioned the budget, and it, it's funded by us, and I think it's a, it's a great way to give back, um, to our city, and, and especially the eleven through seventeen, these kids don't vote. So, this is not the way to vote, it's to, it's to, it's to provide an opportunity for, for our kids. Um, also, on a bigger scale of things, um, the, the things that, that are going on in the world, um, we have also, uh, a, a, a situation here in Fredericksburg as well. But I, I see this as an opportunity to bridge the gap of, of relations of the community and, and policing, um, all the way around, all the way across the board. It gives, it gives, by incorporating the, the police department in this program, it gives the youth, as well as the community, a way to see officers in a non-policing, should I say, uh, or, 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 or engaging as in criminal conduct. It, it gives, it gives us an aspect that the officer's a human. It also humanizes, uh, our citizens as well, where it gives the, the police, uh, or any law enforcement the opportunity also to see that, uh, our kids are, are human as well. And it, it just brings, it, it bridges the gap to me, um, which is big to me. So any, any tension, I, I would like to, to, to help with, uh, with a program like this, to try to ease things, um, and set a tone that, that, that Fredericksburg is a great place, um, as long as we strive hard to make it better. But we can't go, uh, not approaching situations and thinking that things are going to fix themselves. So, once again, um, it's, it's big to me. I'm glad, I appreciate everybody on council who, who, who agreed, um, to add this to our budget. It's, it's really big, and, uh, I want to say thank you to you guys. Um, I know y'all heard me over and over, but I want to say thank you again. And, uh, it's huge to me. And also, um, to, to finalize it, um, we had a couple of meetings with the, I had a couple of meetings with the Parks and Rec Department and the police department, and, um, what, what we decided to do is, in respect to Mr. James E. Bailey, um, like I said, was a former principal at James Monroe High School, to call this, um, the James E. Bailey Midnight Madness, out of respect for what he created years ago, and I know it was effective then, and, and, and I very well hope so, that this time around, it will be just as well. So, that's, that's my public introduction, and also my thank you. So, appreciate you.
Thank you, Council Frye. I understand volunteers are welcome.
Volunteers are welcome. Uh, can I say very welcome?
Yes.
Volunteers are welcome, but, um, you can go to, uh, the Parks and Rec Department, get all that information, but volunteers are welcome. And the phone number is five four oh three seven two ten eighty-six. I got to know it by heart now. So, um, you know, whoever's paying attention, uh, please reach out, and if you know of any, any kids, um, tell them to go get registered. Um, if you forget all this information, go to the city website and email me, and I'll do my best. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Council Frye. Item seven B, Council Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, I was not supportive of the action taken by the council, the position taken by the council, and official action's been taken, um, in regards to the Happy Ending situation. Uh, the situation here is a little bit about what we want in our city, especially with our historic downtown. You know, what do we want our historic downtown to be? A friend of mine years ago, and I've got it in my office as a joke, uh, gave it to me, and said, "Fredericksburg, a drinking town with a history problem." And it is becoming a bit of a problem. And the other part of the problem is, is we have not been very good at being consistent in the way we have dealt with that situation. You know, on this council, I was there when we went full bore at the Otter House, in which case, at that time, we were accused of being overzealous in dealing with that situation. Uh, I know staff would point to the fact that there were other issues involved, which, as we all know, when it went to court before Judge Stevens, didn't go anywhere, uh, but we still went there. We did the same thing and with, with F.W. Sullivan's at, at one point. So there are things we can do. We just need to have, make the decision as a council to direct staff to take those appropriate actions. Having said that, what has been kind of difficult for me to handle in all this situation is I have staff on one side sitting in a room going through all the facts and figures and coming up with their report. I've got the neighbors over here who have been screaming and yelling for years about this issue, and you heard it this evening, that frankly, right now, everybody's talking at us, nobody's talking to get to where we need to be. I would have to, having seen the tapes and some of the information available, would have to agree with the neighbors that it is probably, or it is more of a problem than was presented to the council. I mean, it's easy to sit and look at the statistical information on a sheet, it's, which is sometimes different than actually being there. And I also have had meetings with the chief, and I understand some of their concerns there, and we do have other issues that we need to deal with. But this is a problem. And in my conversations with all the members of council, nobody has disagreed that we have an issue. The question is, how do we deal with it? And the fact of the matter is, over the past few years, we have dealt with it in completely different ways. I think the first step that really needs to be taken here, uh, and I have to agree, and in all the conversations, the neighbors have met with Happy Endings and met with everybody else that there can be, and then sitting there saying, "Oh, we'll mediate," I don't think gets us anywhere. I think this really comes to the council to make a decision on what it can do and what it cannot do. Uh, the last time I spoke on this, and there are things we can do. We can do checkpoints. We can do a lot of things, if we're willing to do it. Uh, but what I would really like to see us do is come up with a more consistent policy in how we deal with the situation, because I think it's important to get it in place now as we continue to develop around us. And one of those things is, would we probably actually get, what I would like, and I'm not going to put staff on the spot this evening, but a lot of points were made tonight by the people who are actually living there. And I would like the staff to either meet with them and/or come back to the council and address those specific points that were made. And I think we would all agree on, again, if we've all said we saw the, we took our things, stuck it on our computers, and we watched it, and I'd be hard pressed to say that there's not an issue here. And frankly, and, and I know some of the, the neighbors would disagree with me, as they, as they commented this evening, it really is an issue that goes beyond just Happy Endings. But Happy Endings for me is, it's in a residential neighborhood, we are here to serve our residents. If it's a problem, we err on the side of the residents, and we take appropriate steps. And again, I know what we did with Otter House, and I, I know they're not apples and oranges, but, I mean, we went full bore, and if you all remember, the comments, the press, the stories about, you know, how heavy-handed we were in dealing with that situation, and I don't want us to get to that point. And then again, we had the issues with, with F.W. Sullivan's, the same type of things, and we, we worked to deal with it. And now to turn around and say, "Well, in this particular case, in, in a residential neighborhood, where residents are actually being affected and saying, 'Well, in this case, we can't do anything,'" is just not acceptable. So my first request would be that we stop talking at each other and start talking with each other to come up with what we can do, and there are things we can do. So first step is, I think some points were made by the residents this evening that I think we owe them an answer to, and I would like to see that answer come back from staff. I would like to even hopefully take it further than that, and actually sit down with the neighborhood and us, and with council members present if need be, to have a serious conversation to talk about what can we do? We've heard all the things about why we can't. You know, my view on life is, we all have ideas and things we want to do, which you don't want to hear is, "No, you can't do that." What you want to hear is, "All right, maybe you can't do it that way, but you can do it another way." I think the staff directed, I mean, excuse me, the council directed the staff to come back with an action plan, not come back with, "I'm sorry, we can't do anything." "Oh, we'll mediate." That's not what we asked for. We asked for an action plan, and I would like to see that action plan, whatever it is, and frankly, I'd, I'd have no problems with sitting down with staff saying, "We can do this, we don't recommend it, because whatever, that's fine. Then it's our decision to make whether we move forward on it or not." But I'm hoping within the next meeting, unless anybody's got a big problem with that, one, the points made by the residents this evening are addressed, and two, we start talking about what we can do, what are our options, and give us all the options, and then we, as a council, can say, "Yes, no, this." But again, I'm really looking for, I'm, I'm really not looking just at Happy Endings, that's turning into the catalyst. But frankly, every Friday, Saturday night, we have issues that we need to deal with all over the city, and this is probably a good time to really sit down and figure out what we're going to put up with and what we're not going to put up with. But again, with Happy Endings, the key is this, it's residents being affected, those are the people we're supposed to serve. The question is, how do we address those concerns? And coming back and saying, "We can't," is not an option. Thank you.
Item seven C. I'm sorry. Um, Council Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't disagree with anything Mr. Kelly stated tonight. I do want to know, uh, why there is such a disparity between what was presented to us, what we've, uh, what we heard this evening, what we've seen via emails. Clearly, there's a, there's a disconnect in the information. Uh, why the disjointedness, uh, is, is concerning, uh, to say the least. So I'd like to know, is if it, it's as extreme as what's, was portrayed this evening, then there's obviously actions we need to take. What was presented to us last time, which is what we asked for, what can we do, and of course, the answer we got was very little outside of mediation. So I do, I'd like to know why there's a disconnect. Hopefully, we can, to Mr. Kelly's point, uh, have a, some clarification on the, uh, specific points that were brought up tonight, because, uh, we're getting, uh, two stories, to be, to be honest, uh, two very different stories. Thank you.
Council Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I guess I'd like to add to, to those and, and agree with the comments made by Mr. Kelly and Mr. Ellis. We have, um, you know, our police have been very responsive in many situations in the city. Um, I know that, um, in the area around the college, they've responded, um, very well with a clear presence when there's an ongoing issue with, um, homes that there are parties and things in, and it has made a difference. And, um, and so I do think there's some further steps without, you know, telling Chief Nye how to do his job. I do think there are further steps and maybe, um, a little more pushback we can, we can give to that, um, establishment and that area. I also think we need to clarify what, what is meant either by closing or non-serving. I think that's definitely an issue, because especially these days when, you know, people have their windows open, but with windows closed, it's still an issue, but sound travels. And when you've got, um, people congregating in an area next to residential homes, that becomes an issue, whether they're being served there or not. So really, it's also the congregation of the people in, um, on the patio area that's an issue. Um, again, um, I, I, it is disheartening to feel like we, um, when we were looking for action steps, that we did hear more of things we could not do, or could not do at this point. Um, and I, I really do want to move forward with some action in this area, you know, more presence, more, um, you know, uh, stepping into, you know, for the noise violations, for the, you know, potential drinking violations, things like that. But, um, you know, a, a good start, especially this time of year, when people are outside congregating, is to close that outside area at ten, meaning closed, meaning they're not out there, because that would go a long way in at least starting the, um, you know, or getting rid of some of the noise violations that people are subject to. And, and, and it's on a daily basis. It's not just weekends, it's a daily basis. So, um, again, I'd like to still push forward and see what other options we can come up with to help the residents.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Withers.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to see us get, uh, heavy into this closed issue, too. I went in and spent a couple hours one night, supposed to be undercover, I'm not sure, I didn't stand there like a silver thumb, but at least I was there. Uh, and, uh, the patio wasn't closed, and there weren't just people that were smoking after ten. I sat there from, I was there from ten till twelve, and, uh, there were people sitting out there having conversation. It wasn't just go to have a smoke, they would go out and sit and talk. I mean, it was, it was pretty full. So, uh, it, it's not closed, uh, on any stretch of the So it's not closed, on any stretch of the imagination, and it's not just people going out to have a smoke. They are clearly not working with the neighbors there. Like you said last week, they're not good neighbors. You know, when people can't sleep in their homes at night, something's, something's got to be done. You know, I said that last time, and I say it again, I know legally, we are restricted, but there must be some way, you know, the business has rights, but so do the property owners have rights. And I think when one infringes on the other one, there must be a way to fix that, to remedy that. So I hope we can figure it away. I know that's, I know that's a tough job, and in a place where you've got a permitted, permitted use in a CT zoning where there are residences. I mean, it's a, it's a tough deal, but we need to figure out a way to, to correct this, certainly get it better. Thank you.
Counsel Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. I know I exhausted my expression at the last meeting about this, but I will bring up one point that I made last time. If we take the same taxpayers that we're discussing tonight on a particular block or one street in town, these are the same folks who, who we take their tax money and we provide incentives for future businesses to come to Fredericksburg. So I think we owe our residents a respect, because without our residents paying taxes, we can't even afford to do some of these incentives that we do to other businesses to draw them to Fredericksburg. So I just think that, you know, if we look at it that way, you know, maybe we can put a little more emphasis on the fact that there is a problem down there. But I just, I just can't see causing a problem in a city when, well, excuse me, I can't see dealing with a problem in a city to where my tax money also provides the opportunity for other businesses to come to Fredericksburg. So we've got to have some type of better respect for the, for the citizens. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Frye. Now we go to item 7C. Alcohol tankers, Counsel Frye.
Thank you very much. I have a busy night, I'm glad I have a bottle of water. This one won't be too long. For my 10 years so far, my time in, I've been, I call myself aggressively approaching the tanker issue. I'm doing my best, I just want to share whatever information I get, I want to share it publicly. I've been waiting on this information. It's not much of an update, but I'll give the public what I have. I've been waiting on this information, it's been a lot of disconnects. I won't say on my end about the tanker issue in Fredericksburg. A lot of times, it keeps being referred to, even when I talk to a representative from CSX, it constantly goes back to quote-unquote "Mayfield." I want to say this once again, I said it when Mr. Rhodey was here, some months ago, once I invited him here. The tanker issue is a city issue, if not a regional issue, it's a serious issue. I would say, first of all, let me get, let me give the update, then I'll give my view. The update is that the last, the last meeting we had, well, the last discussion we had when Mr. Rhodey was here, there was a discussion of extending a track, an existing track, to get the ethanol tanker cars out of, let's say, city limits, or push them further away from residential neighborhoods. At this time, there, we're still at a standstill, we, CSX is looking into whatever they can do, and what I'm understanding now, there is state money that has already been allocated some time ago. And what I'm getting now is that they're pretty much up to $800,000 short on extending the line and so on and so forth. I will still pursue whatever I can do on my end and be as aggressive as I can. Sometimes, I guess if you keep repeating yourself, it really doesn't mean anything. So on that note, with the tanker issue, the ethanol issue in Fredericksburg, I would just end this part by saying this, if we had a derailment, what's the likelihood that we would die? And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Frye, you're up again. It's item 7D, missing persons.
Thank you, once again. This missing persons item that I added to the agenda is, is more or less based upon something that happened here in the city, and it gave me an understanding that this is something that we probably could work on a little bit better for the future. With all due respect, rest in peace to Mr. Stewart. He's a resident who lived actually in Ward 4, in the Mayfield neighborhood, and if you guys remember, he was reported missing, and we had all the alerts going up. And within the course of, you know, a short amount of days, he was found pretty much still in the Mayfield neighborhood. Once, once, I mean, I'm not, I'm not in law enforcement, I'm not in a search team, I'm not on the fire department, none of that, but I saw that myself, that it seems to be something that we can do. I did speak with Chief Nye, and I expressed to him that I would take it upon myself to be an advocate, I would love some help of any, of any sorts, but I would take it upon myself to be an advocate, a community advocate, to try to gather people together, whatever I could do, if it's bullhorns, whatever, to try to come up with an idea for the city to create some type of search party, rescue party type team. We don't have a lot of these type of situations here, but I would like to be, I like to be proactive, but this one here is more of being reactive to something that did happen in Fredericksburg. So on my reactive side, I will be working with Chief Nye and the police department, hopefully the fire department, and every department we can have in the city, and I will report to the city manager and the mayor to see what we can come up with. But I would like, I would like to be, to a point to where in Fredericksburg, if we do have a missing person, that we have something in effect already to where we could gather folks in certain areas and, and go by the authorities and tell them what we're allowed to do and what we can't do. We don't want to interfere with the search, but we want to help. So I just want to put that out there. Like I said, with Mr. Stewart, I didn't know Mr. Stewart personally, but rest in peace to Mr. Stewart, he was a city resident, and he did pass away in Fredericksburg as a lost person, missing person. So I would just like to, like to say, be reactive and try to help with this problem in the future. So thank you, Mayor Greenlaw.
Thank you, Counsel Frye. Counsel Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could just add, I believe that Chief Nye is here, I believe that we also, if there's an instant, and if there's an instance where a family member, that there's the fear that somebody will wander and get lost, we established a program years ago, an alert program, where you could basically get a bracelet and be registered with the city police for a nominal fee, so that it was a little bit more assurance that if somebody, that you are aware of the issue beforehand, that somebody might, you know, wander somewhere and get into some trouble, that you could be proactive in that way. So certainly, Mr. Frye, it's a great idea, but also remind people that if, if it is something you know about prior, that you can take steps. And am I correct in that, Chief Nye? I'm sorry if I could call on you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Yes, the program you're speaking on is Project Lifesaver, and I did discuss that with Mr. Frye. We had advertised this in the past, and over time, some of our officers that have been trained with that have, have moved on, they've left the departments, and the number of people that we have trained has diminished. And when Mr. Frye and I had this conversation, I assured him that we're retooling this, we've identified a number of people that want to be trained to do this, and once we are ready, we will post something prominently that we're ready to take on new clients for that. So that's a, that's a work in progress, and it's something that we talked about, we're just caught between, we have the people that are interested in the training, we just have to identify when we can get them trained, and then we have to have something publicly out on that very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any members, is there anything from the consent agenda that any council would like to pull? If not, do we have a motion?
Move consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. We have one set, one set of minutes for us for our approval, the work session of March 24th, 2015. Any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move approval of minutes as submitted.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
City manager agenda, item 10A, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute open space use agreement with Fredericksburg Agricultural Fair. I will call on Mr. Ekstrom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an item to approve renewal of an open space use agreement with the Fredericksburg Agricultural Fair. As you know, locality is generally taxed, base real estate taxes on the fair market value of land for its highest and best use. But the Virginia code allows localities to tax certain categories of real estate based on how the land is actually used, like forest land, agricultural land, and land devoted to open space use. The city's adopted city code 70-100, which authorizes this land use taxation. Landowners apply to have their real estate taxed based on land use by submitting an application to the commissioner of revenue. They have to do that once, and the commissioner of the revenue first verifies that the use of the land actually fits the definition of the applicable use in the state code. And for land use taxation, the commissioner also has to verify that the landowner for the parcel in question has an agreement with the locality to continue that particular use for a period of, from four to 10 years. That initial determination is made once and re-verified annually, but every time the four to 10-year agreement expires, that has to be renewed in order for the land use taxation to continue, and that's what council is looking at tonight. For the agricultural fair, the city has had an agreement in place with the fair since 1989 for their 30-acre parcel on Airport Avenue. The current agreement expires at the end of this tax year, and the proposed agreement extends the agreement for another four years. The agreement is essentially word-for-word based on the agreement terms specified in the code of the Virginia Administrative Code. The fair itself has been in operation since the 1700s, it's continuing its, the use of its land for agricultural and open space use. They host events such as 4H dinners, charity events, barbecue festivals, and of course, the fair itself. The difference between the fair market value use of this particular parcel and the assessment based on open space use means that the city would forego approximately $17,000 per year if it were to continue, if it were to authorize this agreement. The commissioner of the revenue has already verified that for this year that the agricultural fair is, meets the definition of open space use for this parcel of land. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Ekstrom?
Would you just explain to the citizens briefly, the road back in case the land were to sell, so they'll understand that?
Certainly. When land is assessed based on its use instead of its highest and best value, obviously, the landowner receives a significant discount in the taxes paid. If they are to change the use, the Virginia code requires that the landowner then repay the taxes that they would have paid for the past five years.
Madam Mayor, I move that we pass a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an open space use agreement of Fredericksburg Agricultural Fair, offering tax incentives in exchange for the preservation of the land for open use, a special use, a space use.
Motion's been made and seconded, please cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Item 10D, Rabahannock Solid, Regional Solid Waste Management Board, there are two items related to that. Mr. Whitley.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. The basic situation, and there's two items, and I'll touch base on them in a moment, but just to give you a basic overview, the R-Board landfill is running out of capacity in the current cell, and they need to build the next cell, which is cell F2. Forecasts are that it would last about seven years. The R-Boards receive bids on constructing the new cell, and those bids are about $5 million. But the R-Board doesn't have enough cash to cash fund that, and they also do not have the ability to borrow the money for that legally. The city and Stafford County, which are the two members of the R-Board, have to borrow the money on behalf of the R-Board. The R-Board does have enough cash to contribute about $1 million. So the plan is that the city and Stafford County will each borrow $2 million and provide the $2 million each to the R-Board to build the cell, so the two and the two, and the one is five. The contractor needs to be given notice to proceed as soon as we can, but the bid expires in mid-June, so that's sort of the timeframe we're looking at. In terms of the details of the, of the financing, the city and county are both planning to issue revenue bonds with the Virginia Resources Authority. Revenue bonds will be secured using a pledge of gross revenue as opposed to net revenue from the R-Board. Their projected fiscal '16 budgetary revenue is $4.9 million. County staff is projecting debt service payments at $700,000 total, which would be divided equally between the city and the county. And then what would happen would be the R-Board would pay the city and the county each $350 out of their revenues to fund the debt service. Revenue bonds would not count against the city's legal or policy debt limits for general obligation debt, and we would need to develop an agreement with the R-Board, and we'll do that as we get closer to the time for closing on the loan. In terms of the financing, the hope is that the R-Board would have enough revenue coming in from the tipping fees and recycling fees and other revenues, they have mainly tipping fees, that not only would they have enough to pay their operating, the debt service which they have to pay first, and then the operating, but they would have enough to have a surplus at the end of the year. If they have an operating deficit, the way the operating agreement is written, the deficit would be split between localities based on our usage. So the two items tonight, the first resolution is a transmittal, we'll ask you to come back on the ninth and act on that. It does a couple of things. It provides authorization to the manager to apply to the VRA for the loan, and then it gives it an amount of 2.25, which is a little bit higher, sort of rolls in, if there's something that comes up in bond financing costs. And then it also provides notice of an intent to reimburse, which we don't think we'll need that, but just in case we do, this would provide for the, the city to reimburse itself if we had to pay the R-Board, advance them some of the money because of cash flow needs that we could reimburse ourselves out of the bond proceeds. The second item is the appropriation, and it would need two readings. We'll ask for the first read tonight, and it does require a public hearing, so we'll have a public hearing on both items on the ninth, and then we'd ask for second reading on the ninth. Now, the appropriation has a couple of different pieces of it. The first is receiving the money from the VRA and giving that to Stafford as the R-Board fiscal agent, so taking the money in and giving it to Stafford. And then the, the second piece of the appropriation is the first year's debt service. And then the, the second piece of the appropriation is the first year's debt service, which the R Board will give us the money to pay, and then we have to pay VRA. It's a, a bit of a unique transaction for us, but basically, the bottom line is we need to build cell F-two, and we need to do it with, with a little bit of speed. Next steps, public hearing in action June ninth. We'll need to apply to VRA, there's an August deadline on that. They'll develop a term sheet, and we'll have a resolution and an agreement with the R Board for council to have a public hearing and act on those at that time, as we get, you know, closer to and, and we can go to the market. So those are the two items. Again, we were asking for first read on the appropriation resolution only, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No questions, but a comment. I want to thank staff for working this agreement through. It is the best, best solution to a very bad situation, and, and appreciate the time and effort went into this, and frankly, to protect the city a little bit with regards to the gross revenues issue. I do want to make it clear to the council and to the public that, under the current financial situations, you know, this is an issue of not only making our operating expense, paying the debt on the cell, it's rebuilding reserves, and hopefully, at some point, also coming to a long-term solution of how we're going to deal with refuse in the future. This gives us the breathing space to have that conversation, and a lot is going on right now at different meetings with different options, and, and at this point in the ballgame, nothing's off the table. So if anybody has any ideas or solutions they'd like to put on the table, we'd love to hear it. Actually, meeting with some representatives tomorrow at our landfill for them to take a look at it and see what they can come up with in, in the use of the facility. But I do think, to be realistic, we need to consider the fact that at some point, we, understanding what the current financial situation is and what we're facing, that we may at some point have to put additional funding under the operational side of the House, which is proportional. The good news is, in our last R Board meeting, the Stafford County reps, and Stafford has already passed these motions, so they're on board, are now seem to be willing to live up to the original agreement and pay their portion of any revenue shortfall on the operational side, which is good news. That's been a bone of contention for quite a while. The one other issue we need to address, we, we discussed with them briefly a few meetings back, is, is frankly, we agreed to pay some tipping fees that frankly, we really didn't need to do by the agreement. We could have gotten away with getting it free, but we're good team players, and one of the things that was pointed out was that we would like to make sure that, should there be any operational shortfall, we get credit for what we're already paying into the tipping fee. But that, of course, will be a discussion for another day. But I want to thank the staff, again, bad situation, good solution, and once we get through this, we're going to have to have some very serious conversations about how we're going to handle this. And frankly, the only workable solution is we take the R Board from a two jurisdiction operation to a five jurisdiction operation and make this a, a regional effort. That's frankly, long-term, is the only thing that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Wilders.
I'd like to thank Counsel Kelly, he's the chair of this board, and it's been a difficult year, and he's done a good job of, of representing the city and making sure that, that we get the best deal we can, along with Mr. Cameron, who also serves on the board with us. It's, as, as Mr. Kelly said, this is a tough deal, but I think we've done the best we can with what we have to work with. So, I, I thank the staff also in working with this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I'll move transmittal, resolution authorizing city manager to apply to the Virginia Resource Authority for financing for Rappahannock Regional Solid Waste Management Board capital construction cost.
Second.
And declaring intent to borrow those funds. Now you can say.
Motion made and seconded. Any, any discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
We need a second, do we not?
No, Madam Mayor, I'll move resolution, first read.
The first was a transmittal.
Right.
This, the, the vote was the first read.
Madam Mayor, I'll move first read demanding the fiscal year 2016 budget in the amount of two million six hundred thousand for the purpose of financing Rappahannock Regional Solid Waste Management Board capital construction costs.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
Call on Mr. Cameron for the city manager's update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. One item from the manager's report, I'd like to emphasize this evening, the city and the Marine Corps, as you know, recently combined efforts for the eighth year to host the marathon, also the historic ten K and the Semper Fred five K, that was held on Sunday, May seventeenth. We had over eight thousand runners participating in the event this year. Registration was actually sold out for both the historic half and the historic ten K. Hotels were sold out well in advance of the event. We had participants coming from forty-seven states and nine foreign countries. It was, as always, a very successful event. It required the cooperation and a lot of hard work from numerous city departments, and also many of our partner agencies participated as well. So we certainly want to thank our, our traffic control folks, our law enforcement folks, our public safety, fire, and EMS, Public Works, trash and recycling collection was outstanding this year. As you also know, there is the Healthy Lifestyle Expo that takes place the couple of days before the event, and during that event, the Department of Tourism and Economic Development hosted a visitor booth, which was well-attended, also sponsored a trolley shuttle from the Expo Center to downtown throughout the day on Saturday. We also received excellent support this year from our partners at the Main Street Program, Anne Glave and, and her volunteers, were great partners that helped conduct a very, very successful event. So kudos to everybody who worked so hard on that. Be happy to answer any questions that you have about any of the other interesting and good work items that you'll find in the manager's report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Cameron? I had the privilege and pleasure today to welcome one hundred and seventy-five riders from the Ride to Recovery to Fredericksburg, who made Fredericksburg their stop. That's quite a wonderful program. They have stopped here before, and they look forward to expanding their, their time with us next year. But I was, I was delighted to, to greet them this, this afternoon. They will be leaving tomorrow morning for the Fredericksburg to Richmond leg of their journey, and then the following day, they will go, they will do a hundred mile leg from Richmond to Virginia Beach. If no other member of this body has anything to bring before us, we are adjourned.